I call this meeting December 12th, 2022 of the Grafton Planning Board Meeting to Order. The, since this meeting is being conducted with both in-person and remote participation, there's a little script pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting of the Grafton Planning Board is being conducted with both in-person and remote participation by board members and members of the public. Remote participation by the public for the public comment agenda item, the public hearings, and any other matter for which the board allows public participation will be via the Zoom raise hand feature. If you raise your hand on Zoom, you will be enabled at an appropriate point to enter the meeting via voice or video to make a comment or ask a question. In all cases, whether in person or remote, please identify yourself by name and address for the record. Every vote tonight will be taken by roll call. Please note that this meeting is being recorded as well as being broadcast live on the Grafton Community Government Television Channel. Now begin the meeting with a roll call of the board to make sure everyone is here and can hear. Mr. Robbins?
Present.
Mr. Hassenger?
I'm here.
Ms. Hassenger?
I am here.
Mr. Van Katraman?
I'm here.
Associate Member Moore McCormack?
Present.
I obviously am here as well. And our staff, our temporary planner is in the room, and I would like to welcome this board and any member of the public to our new planner who technically doesn't start until December 19th, but happens to join us tonight, Ms. Gofflin.
Hello, hello Chairman Wood, Vice Chairman Hassenger, members of the board. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm looking forward to working together very closely in the upcoming weeks, and I'm also looking forward to to meeting even person and streamlining that transition to the new role. Again, thank you for having me, and I'm excited to get started.
Glad to have you. All right, let's bring us to our first agenda item as always is public participa-, you know, public comment item. If any member of the public has an item to bring to the board's attention that is not already on the agenda, now would be the time to do so either via the raise hand feature or in the room. And I'm not seeing any.
No hands raised on Zoom.
All right, that brings us to our first action item and approval not required Plan A and R 2022 dash zero six for three forty-one, three thirty, three thirty-one, Providence Road, Mark and Maureen Warner. This is a plan that we previously approved. There was a slight clerical issue on the formal mylar that we received that just had in a butter incorrectly labeled. So this is just a reapproval of the board and authorization for, I guess, me as chair to sign.
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Hassenger?
Aye.
Ms. Hassenger?
Aye.
Mr. Van Katraman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously. I'll sign that after the meeting and get the staff so you can pick it up prior tomorrow. Our next agenda item is a draft decision for sixteen Morgan Drive relating to the geese for Jean Marie Hewton. We had a brief discussion on this last meeting, and there were some modifications that staff was to do for the draft decision, which I did see in there. Any comment? Discussion on this item?
I thought the added language was helpful.
Yep.
I also like the highlighting.
Oh, hey, can you hear Linda? She liked the highlighting. I thought that was very helpful, the way it was done.
I just highlighted the parts where I made some substantive changes.
Yeah, we understand, but you did it. So it's very, you know, exactly how you did it was very helpful. You highlighted even the item number. Whatever, okay.
Thank you.
Well.
So the.
I'm happy with it.
Yeah, just a point I want, I wanted to make sure the board, you know, was in agreement with the, the provision, the condition that says that this is good for a year, and within that year, we would be reviewing it and extending it for up to five years. I think that's pretty much the sense of what we were looking for. The question I have is, is that, do we, do we all think that a five-year extension is the right number, and is there a provision for going beyond that?
You want me to speak to why I picked five years?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, knowing nothing about geese and keeping them as pets, I went online and tried to figure out, it was my understanding, and I was not here at the beginning of this public hearing, so I, correct me if I'm wrong, that one of the, the, one of the main purposes of having the pets as geese was for eggs. And what I found online is that after like three to five years, they're no longer useful for egg, as useful for eggs. And so I took into account that some board members had wanted to name the geese and specifically put them in the, so I, I, what I, what I took from the board's assessment was that they wanted, these three geese were fine, but if there were other geese or more or different ones, that maybe that wouldn't be as fine. And so I said, well, if they're, if it's four eggs, five years kind of out would be enough time. If that is not what the, the board wanted, you could make it any longer than that. But that, I just had to pick it, I guessed.
I, I think up to five years is.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a little long. That's five years from now or from next year?
No, five years.
I think, I, it, the way it's, the way I wrote it, I think it is five years for, in a year, you could extend it for another five years.
An additional five years. And it does say up to, Mr. Hassenger, as well, so it.
Oh, it says we can extend up to.
Up to.
I didn't see that. That seems fine. Uh, yeah, uh, for Fiona, I, we had a field visit, and I personally interviewed the male. And he was noisy, but, and, you know, not too friendly, but I think he's okay. I don't know about other ones.
So one of my reasons for making sure that we're all clear on this is that, you know, it's conceivable that the applicant here may want to keep geese, may want to, you know, have new geese replacing these and sort of keep them indefinitely. But if that's the case, this is a special permit that can be modified as needed.
Right, or they can have, you can require that they come back for a new special permit. But I took to heart the fact that, that some members wanted me to name the geese, and that it was these particular geese that did not cause any problems when they went to the site visit, and I don't know anything about.
Yeah, so.
Oh, that's okay.
The way I'm reading this, just to kind of say out loud, you know, what I'm seeing is that we can extend it up to an additional five years. We do not need to hold the actual public hearing on the matter for this, but if, if it wants to be more than that five years, or we want to come back and have it for past that five years, we could hold a mod, actual modification on this, you know, decision to do that.
Yeah, I think Ms. Houghton has got her hand raised if she wants to entertain her.
Yeah, I do see anyways, I will say that if there's any new information, we really can't hear right now, but you're free to come up if it's something to clarify.
It's just a clarification. Hi, thank you very much. So it's just a clarification. These are three pets. While they do lay eggs and we use the eggs, they're not for egg laying. I don't anticipate when these little guys are no longer with us that I will be getting any new ones. So this is specific for these three geese. If I could just clarify that at the end of the one year and then the five years, that we could apply for an additional five years because they do have up to a twenty-year lifespan.
Yeah.
And I, I would hate to.
Yeah, the, the provision as written would be that the board could grant up to an additional five years without having another public hearing, another, you know, public process. It'd be basically sending a letter to the planning department saying you would like to extend it, you know, before that year, and we would just take it up in normal course of an action item.
Okay.
And then if it was to be go beyond that five years, we would have to do a minor, a modification of the, of the decision to allow for past that point.
Okay. Okay.
There'll be a lot of other different people on the board than, there's only a certain amount we should, you know, push out to them. Uh, Fiona, the reason that I was concerned about this is we've had problems and are currently having problems with people citing that special permit you gave back in, you know, Lot Three said this, and my case is sort of like that, so you gotta, and, and we're in court about it. So being careful to guard as much as possible, the idea that each special permit is its own, and, and, you know, what we do on this one doesn't mean that everybody can have three geese in, in an acre and expect to get it from us.
So to succinctly say.
They should be able to have, you know, whatever.
Unicorns.
Yeah, oh unicorns, yeah.
The, the, the way I wrote it, and if this is, in case that, I just want to make sure that everyone's clear, I wrote it that they don't have to, we don't have to have another public hearing, but there has to be some evidence that there's written notice to the abutters, because this was definitely an issue where the abutters are living there and, and should have the right to know that you're going to be discussing it. So it's not just simply a letter to the, to the planning board or to the board.
That's an appropriate point, thank you.
So you have to, you have to somehow let all your abutters know in writing, but you don't have to advertise it, and it doesn't have to go through a public hearing process.
And, yeah, and like I did mention, after the five year, after the additional five years, so six years from today, basically, it does not immediately mean that you can't have the geese. It just means that you'd have to have, you know, the public hearing or, you know, modification involved in actually changing the decision.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, okay, I, I think I move approval of this with favorable findings where there are findings to be made.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to find favorably on the decision with an approval. Does this motion include authorizing me to sign?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Presumably it includes granting the requested waivers and all the stuff that usually goes along with an approval.
Everything that's in yellow that is either grant or deny or approve or allow, we're gonna do the positive.
Correct.
Okay.
We're going to favorably find.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we say favorable, because occasionally no is the favorable.
Okay.
Yes, that's why we say favorable rather than.
Right.
Yes, no.
So I have a motion and a second to find favorably and authorize me to sign the decision. Any further discussion on the motion?
Listen, I can't raise my hand on my phone. How old are these geese? Do you know?
I forget.
May of last year.
May of last year.
About a year and a half.
So about a year and a half, as I heard from the gallery just now.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Hassenger?
Uh, aye.
Ms. Hassenger?
Aye.
Mr. Van Katraman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously. This staff will get the appropriate documentation out to you as well.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, that brings us to our next agenda item, which is the continuation of our discussion regarding Stillwater Estates, eleven Willer Road. I, we did get some, several correspondence. I would caution that I don't really want to rehash what has been said at previous meetings, and then hopefully we don't have to go another few hours into this, and we can settle at least a majority of the board's responsibilities with this tonight. E, would you like to just summarize what we've heard from our council, if possible?
So the board did receive a memo from our town council, who believes that, you want to just read it? Is that easier to?
Sure.
Because I don't know that everyone else, how do you want me to handle? I can, I can just summarize what I discussed.
We do have it posted on the mini materials online, so, or you can also read it. I don't mind either way, whichever you feel more comfortable doing.
I, I'm happy to just tell you that, um, the first.
Short enough.
I'm sorry?
Short enough, why don't you read it?
Okay. Uh, so it's to the planning board from town council dated today. After review of the Grafton Land Trust petition to revoke or modify subdivision approval dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-two, the petition, and various related documents including the respondents memorandum and opposition received on Friday, December ninth, twenty-two, it is my opinion that the board should decline to entertain the petition for the following reasons. One, the Grafton Land Trust petition seeks to amend, modify, or rescind an approved definitive subdivision plan based on a chain, a claim that construction pursuant to the approved plan by the respondent developer has resulted in improperly channeled stormwater drainage. Thus, the petition sets forth a dispute between two abutting private property owners. The town should not involve itself in such a dispute. The petition, two, the petition purports to be filed pursuant to Mass General Law Section, uh, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one W. However, based on a review of the case law interpreting Section eighty-one W, it does not appear that the statute gives rights to abutters, particularly those who were both participated in the definitive subdivision approval process and failed to appeal the various approvals that resulted. And three, the town engineer has confirmed that the respondent developer has compiled with this board's decision, has complied with this board's decision and conditions. In addition to this memo, later on in the day, town council and the board received an amended petition from the attorney for the Grafton Land Trust. And I had a conversation on the phone with town council as to whether that changes anything in her memo with regard to whether or not the Grafton Land Trust has standing, and she said it did not. And she, in response to some of the questions that the board members had asked yesterday, we just, she, she told me that the board does not need to give any weight to the petition as it's not properly before the board because of lack of standing, and that our engineer has stated that the project is where it should be at this stage in the development. And the planning board doesn't need to get involved in any kind of drainage easement issues. The planning board, the plans approved state that the, the drainage approves the way the drainage was put on the plan and how that actually gets built is not within the purview of, as long as it is built to the planning boards, to, to the approved plan specifications. So in, in the, in the eyes of the town council, the advice is that there is not a petition formally in front of the board because there is a lack of standing and that the board should proceed in the way it would normally proceed in the stage of the development. Act in its normal course is what she said.
All right. Any discussion from the board or further questions regarding anything?
I have no reason to disagree with council's opinion, having spent a fair amount of time reading up on eighty-one W, too.
I, I went down that rabbit hole, too. And I'm not an attorney either, so I'm gonna let what she said stand.
Yeah, and I will, I will point out that in the previous discussion, that our previous meeting, the, the board basically said, we need to hear town council's opinion before we do any, make, take any further action.
Now.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak to council, to council's memo?
What, let's find out from the board, how we want to proceed. I, for the board's knowledge, we have Attorney Swerter looking to speak to the town council's opinion. We do have Attorney Napier in the room as well. So if the board wants to hear from Attorney Swerter from the Grafton Land Trust, we can certainly hear from him. I want to defer to the will of the board on the rest, how we proceed tonight. I don't hear in for Oregon, so come on up, Mr. Swerter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael Swerter, thirty-two Barbara Jean Street, representing the Grafton Land Trust. Um, I did, um, see, I went to the website and I did read council's opinion today. I also spoke with Attorney Kramer this afternoon as to my concerns about her opinion, and indicated to her that I would provide her with additional information regarding the opinions that she gave. I want to speak first to the standing issue. To my knowledge, and I did ask Attorney Kramer if there was a case that she could cite to indicate that we did not have standing, she did not have a case to send to me. And I do have two pieces of information which I would like to provide to the board, which I did provide to Attorney Kramer. One is from the handbook issued by the Massachusetts Federation of Planning Boards and Appeals Boards, in which it indicates that the interested person portion of Section eighty-one W, which is what we are filing under, does include, in their opinion, anyone who receives legal notice. As in a butter, we receive legal notice. Secondly, there is, the only case that I could find to deal with Section eighty-one W said that it had to be a person with cognizable interest. That is the phrase that the court used. Certainly, as in a butter where water is flowing over our property, we have a cognizable interest. As far as it, a case regarding the inability of someone to ask for a modification who was at a hearing, I could find no, no substantive support for that. I did ask counsel again for cases on that point. I did not receive any. And she did acknowledge in our discussion that there was not much on this issue in the law, which I agree with her. There are probably five to six, maybe seven cases that really deal on this point. Therefore, to say that we do not have standing to bring this, bring this, I find troubling and, and for the second perspective, the issues that we were concerned about, as you will see from the amended petition that I filed today, and I should make a note, when the petition was filed and forwarded to Attorney Kramer, she did not receive the letter that I had submitted in August of this year, which detailed the bases for why we were concerned about this. So she was making an initial decision based upon lack of information that was supplied in the letter, which was quoted in the petition. In this case, for, for us to have continuing conditions in this, in this permit, which is finding C three, which is that there was supposed to be a trail improvement plan put together. If there isn't one put together, I'm not sure what my clients, if they don't have standing, what their recourse is. Secondly, there was a, there's a requirement in the plan that there be a, a plan of public access. It was your condition prior to endorsement. To my knowledge, that, that plan and sheet have never been filed, yet the plan was endorsed in October of twenty, October of last year. And I find it troubling that that, because we're the abutters, we have access. So if those two continuing conditions, one that was not, we did not know whether or not you filed your endorsement when you made your decision in March, that you had six months or whatever to do your endorsement on your plan, to say that we would have had to object to that after the hearing is crazy, because we, it wasn't not done yet, so it doesn't make much sense. And as far as the issue of the continuing condition from the special permit, conditioning C three, that there was to be a trail improvement plan, that disappeared. It was in the initial definitive plan, and on the final plan, it's disappeared. It's not there. There is no, no encountering that. It is difficult for someone who has gone back and listened to your hearings on this from the very first hearing that the board had on the flexible development plan. It seemed it was the unanimous opinion of this board that you wanted to protect that trail. To say that the trail, the, the abutter, on whose trail that is, has no standing based upon two continuing conditions, your oversight, you retain that, I didn't, that to me is a bit boggling, and I would strongly advise the board, before you make a decision, that you actually hold a formal hearing on this issue, so that you can have a collected amount of information, of legal opinion to make your judgment on, and to establish it for the record as to what you're making your decisions on in case there is any court action in the future. I will take, I'll take any questions, oh, excuse me, I do want to address one thing, on the, on the, the private matter with regard to the channeling of the water. We've gone over that, counsel and I have different agreement. I'm not going to go there because I want to limit it to what counsel said here. But it is not simply a private matter. You waived, you, you gave waivers to allow water to be dumped within ten feet of this, the GLT's property line. You actively gave a waiver, and I would assume, basically, that there was a tip, there was a trail improvement plan that was supposed to be put in place to make sure there was no erosion. That plan's gone away, so I would contest that this isn't just about a private easement. This is the fact that you gave a waiver to let somebody come closer to our land on a trail improvement plan which was supposed to exist and has disappeared off the final plan. So the actions that counsel has recommended, I think, if it were me, I would be cautious in taking that action, because I don't think it was, again, I would love to brief this for Attorney Kramer, because there is more information up there that, you know, I talked to her this afternoon, it's almost impossible to get too much out in a short period of time. As far as the, the petition and the ability to revoke, I just, I do want to make one, just one statement briefly for, from Attorney Napier's brief. He indicates that it's a nullity, that we cannot ask for that, because we'd have to get consent of the mortgagees. That is an incorrect statement. There's a court case on point that says that provided that it doesn't affect the marketable title to the property, that you do not have to get consent from a bank or a mortgager. So I want to clear that up, because we're, I, on the board, that would be something that would potentially affect my opinion. I want to keep it short tonight. I don't want to be here for another hour, so I think I've tried to confine myself to the issue at hand. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Anyone have any questions for Attorney Swerter?
I, I'm not sure I want to do, ask questions right now, but I have a, a couple of thoughts, maybe after we hear, I imagine we're gonna hear from the other side. And then maybe it'll be a good time to talk about it, just a couple of things that I'm thinking about, other than the fact that this is, we don't get paid nearly enough to try and deal with this.
I, I, I do want to add one thing, I do want to submit to the board, you had been asking for information regarding the drainage and what it would do from our engineer. I do have emails that I can present to you.
All right, for the moment, can I have you hand it just to staff?
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
You know, if we need to.
We had, we anticipated that Mr. Hill was going to be here tonight, because the board had requested him to be here, and we have the emails, but.
All right. Sorry, he couldn't be here personally.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Not to prolong this at all, but the board's engineer is in the audience at the moment if there were questions regarding engineering, and I'm going to give him a copy of this.
Wonderful. All right. Since I let Mr. Swerter speak, I'm assuming you'd like to have a few words with Mr. Napier?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I was on my way to the meeting this evening from my home in Uxbridge, and I thought, hmm, maybe I ought to stop at my office just to see if there's been something submitted. And sure enough, I see that late this afternoon, there was in fact an amendment submitted. I've, I've had an opportunity to read it, and I've listened to Mr. or Attorney Swerter's comments, and I'd like to tell you the following. First of all, to my knowledge, the board has relied upon the advice, the good advice of Graves Engineering for something on thirty years, and to my knowledge, the town has relied upon the advice of town council for at least ten to fifteen that I know of, perhaps even, even more. So I see no reason why, on this particular occasion, the board shouldn't do that or should even question town council's advice. Nonetheless, I'll address Attorney Swerter's points one by one. Concerning the standing of the petitioners, it makes sense that there's not a lot, a lot of law on that topic. There's not a law, a lot of law on eighty-one W, because it, as I mentioned in my memorandum, our opposition, it's rarely invoked, because it's an extraordinary measure of relief for the board to avail itself of, and only when there's a substantial breach of conditions or the project just isn't being constructed in accordance with the plans. We know that's not the case here. The statute uses the term interested person without defining it. So there's an open question of who is an interested person. Other provisions of the subdivision control law and the zoning act use the term interested party. So we'll assume, for the sake of discussion, that interested person in eighty-one W means interested party, or party in interest, as set forth in other sections of the subdivision control law. And the law of standing is clear. You, you're presumed to have standing if you're a party in interest. And again, let's say that an interested person is a party in interest, and you're a party in interest if you're in a butter or in a butter two or a butter within three hundred feet. But in order to prove that you have standing, you have to prove. have standing, you have to prove that you have some particular harm. You have suffered some particular harm, or as the courts use the term, and as Attorney Swerder used the term, some cognizable interest. That we don't have here. They don't have standing for that reason. They have not suffered some particular harm, some harm that's unique in kind to them. They've suffered no harm. All of the harm that they claim is prospective. We will suffer this harm. The trail will be damaged. Increased water will flow onto the property. They make those claims without any support from a qualified professional, like a civil engineer. And for that reason, their claims of harm are what the courts call remote, speculative, abstract. And courts do not give relief for that kind of harm. So for those reasons, they do not have standing. Secondly, the point was made that this requirement that there be a trail improvement plan was a condition. It wasn't. I'm quite sure it was cast as a finding in, I think, the special permit decision. And as I set forth laboriously and in detail in our memorandum, that finding was cast prospectively in the special permit decision. The applicant will prepare a trail improvement plan. The applicant will coordinate with town staff. And all of that was supposed to be done prior to submittal of the definitive plan. It was. All of those requirements were satisfied. And we know that, because the plan that was submitted with the definitive application, definitive plan application, definitive approval, I beg your pardon, did show a trail improvement plan. There was a sheet and several details labeled "trail improvement plan." And yes, it did disappear. And the reason is quite clear. If you look at the timing of events, the application was filed in late 2020. There was a typical public hearing process where testimony was heard. The board had discussions. Pursuant to those discussions, the parties, namely the applicant and the land trust, went off, conducted their own discussions and negotiations. And pursuant to those discussions and those negotiations, the report, or the result of those, were reported to you by Attorney Leno in his memorandum, saying, okay, we, the applicant, will agree to fund costs to design trail improvements, or construct trail improvements, with an overall cost not to exceed $13,000. At another point in the memo, which the board had, it was all part of the record. It's all part of the record. There's nothing unclear or unambiguous about the record. Attorney Leno goes on, "We're prepared to provide significant restoration to the portion of the trail network abutting locusts, as shown on that trail improvement plan that was then before you. Or, in the alternative, donate $13,000 to petitioners." So that all happened. Decision was rendered. $13,000 was paid to the land trust. And as a result of that, the trail improvement plan, portions of the definitive plan, of course, they were deleted from the plan, because the parties all knew and understood that the result of their discussions and negotiations were that the applicant, the McGriff's, would construct the trail improvements, or pay $13,000. And apparently, the land trust said, well, we'll accept a donation of $13,000. In lieu of trail improvements, we can make the trail improvements ourselves, or use it however we want. And that is why the trail improvement plan disappeared, as it was put, from the definitive plan that was recorded. Now, you might hear, no, no, that's not our recollection. That's not why it disappeared. Well, frankly, it doesn't matter, because again, the record speaks for itself. If you read each of the relevant documents concerning the special permit application and the definitive plan application, they're all available. I commend you for making all of these documents available. Although, I'm not excited about the six or eight hours it took to plow through them. But when you do, there is very little left to doubt. There's nothing ambiguous. There's nothing unclear. And again, you might hear, that's not what we thought. That's not what happened. That's not the discussion. Well, we all know that human nature, being what it is, memories fade, or change, or shift, in a way that maybe suits your advantage. But the record is clear. It was either $13,000 or trail improvements. That's why the trail improvements disappeared from the plan. If they really was concerned about that, or if they really did object to that, then as town council notes, they had an opportunity to appeal the decision. And the plans that were put forth with that decision, they didn't. Finally, there's the comment made that, well, now there's this additional issue. And these additional issues, you know, frankly, were issues, if at all, back when this started in August. So I haven't discussed this with my client, but I'm sure it's as troubling to him as it is to me, that additional issues keep arising. But this additional issue now is, well, there was supposed to be a public access plan, and there isn't one. There is. The relevant sheet of the definitive plan, I've got it over there. I think it's C8 or something like that. It's the plan that shows the lots. That sheet, let me, if you're looking at it, let me get it. So that sheet clearly shows that access to the open space is available among numerous locations along the public road. There must be, in the aggregate, 100 feet of frontage, if you will, that the open space has on what will be a public road. And if I'm not mistaken, there's also frontage that the open space has. It's a sheet C4 of the definitive plan. The open space also has frontage on an existing public road, which is Wheeler Road, on each side of the proposed roadway. And finally, the comment was made, well, how do we know, how do we, being the land trust, know where our access is? Well, I don't know how you wouldn't. If you look at the definitive plan, there's a common boundary between the proposed open space and the land trust property. I don't think it's necessary for anybody to label that access. If I own land, and there's a boundary, and somebody else's land is right there, and that land is public by definition, I have access to that public land. It's just the nature of land ownership. So the idea that there's some sort of a substantive or fatal failure merely because there isn't some separate sheet labeled "trail access plan" is, again, yet another issue that isn't one. So for all of those reasons, oh, and by the way, I disagree with the comment that the consent of the mortgager is not required. I've read the cases on 81W as well. And there's case after case that says the opposite. The consent of the mortgager is required. There is a case that says that if, if an owner, and consent of owners is required as well, with an exception, unfortunately, applicable here. And that exception is that if an owner acquires all the lots in the subdivision, which my client did, then consent from him would not, is not required. But it does, the case does not stand for the proposition that consent of a mortgager is not required. The statute itself says that. It couldn't be more clear. And one would assume that, since we made that point in our opposition, the town council would have noted that, hey, by the way, consent of mortgagees is not required. She didn't. And on that point, I'm here to tell you this evening, that it has been represented to me, and I will represent to you, that I spoke to counsel for both mortgagees today, one for mutual, one and one for the seller. And as you might expect, on behalf of their clients, they indicated that their clients are not inclined to consent, they will not consent, to the revocation. So any of this is sort of futile for that reason. So for all of those reasons, and for the additional reason that, you know, they have a remedy for any of these items, frankly. Their remedy is in court. They're not availing themselves of it, because, A, I suspect their chances aren't great, and B, this is just sort of an easier path, cheaper path, maybe a quicker path, or one that, you know, is before, more friendly for them. But they do have a remedy for any and all of their issues and complaints. And that remedy is in court. And I think that town council's opinion reinforces that notion when she says this is a private matter. So for all those reasons, we'd ask you, again, not to, not to consider the petition as having any validity or merit. Thank you.
If I may, just to take three points. I'm not going to, I'd only clarify a couple of things. There's a Patriots game, there's a Patriots game tonight, and I know everybody wants to get back to it. Number one.
One second.
I just wanted to ask the board, I mean, the, these lawyers are probably not going to agree with each other. And I am not a lawyer, and town council has already kind of stated their opinion. So if the board wants to hear these things, that's fine. But I'm not sure what, the board, the town council's already sort of stated that it's, that it's not properly before the board, and that it shouldn't be given any weight. Whether that means you still want to hear the arguments is up to the board.
I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify three things. I mean, I've already stated my, my absolute disagreement with what town council has said, with all deference. I'm a citizen of Grafton. People use this trail. I'd like to use it. But I also represent developers as well. I just think she's wrong. And that will be for the board, the board to decide if they want to have a hearing, a formal hearing, where they can hear more of that. It would be outstanding. I want to clarify the $13,000. The board was there. You know what the $13,000 was meant for. It was for a waiver of the intersection distance. It was supposed to be 600 feet. You granted a waiver for that. The public benefit was to make a donation to the Grafton Land Trust. I cite Exhibits 15 and Exhibit 17. Those are the Leno emails, Leno emails in Exhibit 17, and the memo in Exhibit 15. Each of those refer to this, that it's subject, it's for the waiver request. It was not for us, because we were already going to, we already had the trail improvement plan and all that that was going to happen. For them to just buy out the trail improvement plan, you would have given the waiver for nothing, which you can't do. It's illegal. You have to get an additional benefit. That's number one. Number two, with regard to the modification and whether or not that's allowed, I just want to cite the board. This is in, in a case of Terrell versus Planning Board of Alton. The history of 81W establishes that the legislature sought to guard against modifications that, quote, impaired the marketability of titles acquired by bona fide purchases from subdivisions. That's Patel versus Planning Board. According to, again, the Federation, I can give this information to you if you want, it has to do with marketability of title. We are looking for a modification, not a revocation, which is one of the reasons that I, we've modified that. It's a modification, not a revocation. Revocation is considered in this case to be a drastic measure. We revised that, so that it was a modification, and it will not affect the marketability of title. So for that, I wanted to clarify that item. And I think that's probably, those are the two that I think were the most, the most important. And I will thank the board for its patience over all of these weeks. And I do hope that we're here to see you one more time in a formal format, with a formal posted public hearing, that the public can comment, because the public uses this trail, and they have a right to be heard. Thank you.
All right. I do see at least two people who seem to want to speak from the public. How does the board want to proceed? Do you want to continue to take comments? Do you want to?
I don't want to spend a lot more time on this tonight. I really don't. Because I don't think that's going to get us anywhere. There is a matter of immediate concern here, which is the lot release. And without resolving questions about the 81W petition, I think it's fair to say that none of this should impact the lot release, because any, any modification that should happen to result from this will not impact the lots for which releases being sought. If there are any modifications resulting from this, it will be on the storm drainage system, which is not on any of the lots for which releases sought. So in my opinion, without resolving the 81W petition question, I think it's, it would be entirely appropriate for the board to approve the lot release without further delay. On the question of the 81W petition, with some of the information that's come in just today and just tonight, I don't want to make a decision on that without having time to digest that, without having town council advise us further on the apparent disagreement between town council and other council. I would need, I would need to follow up on that further. And there's no way we're going to get that done tonight. So as of right now, I'm not prepared to say that I recommend that the board go forward with the 81W petition. I'm not quite sure that we can totally drop it, but I think we can safely defer it, without impacting the interests of the developer here in continuing the project. So with that, I don't know how much more we can hear tonight. That will be helpful for our proceeding tonight. I don't think that we.
I'll just tell you very briefly, that from our perspective, unlike others, I'd be happy to sit here and debate this all night, because there is a significant interest at stake. However, I think Mr. Robin puts it well. And I've tried to maintain separation between these issues with moderate success. But I think it's crystal clear that the 81W questions, the impact to the Grafton Land Trust questions, are in, by and large, same property, sure, but by and large, unrelated to the 81W requests. So for that reason, assuming the board agrees with him, then I'm prepared to defer and await further action, if any, on the 81W question. But I do agree with you, that there's no reason whatsoever the board can't act on the lot release question. So with that, I'll mercifully cease my comments on the 81W question. Thank you.
Mr. Hesseger, go ahead.
Yeah. My head hurts. I think I largely agree with Dave. There were a couple of points that I just wanted to, rather than me, or I did, oh, that's, that's something we ought to keep in mind. All of the no appeals, it may well be important, but without spending the eight hours and trying to get all the documents, and I'm not sure, tonight, I'm going to remember enough to know what order everything came in, and what everybody thought. But there were no appeals, so what we have is what we have. And we've got to go from there. The one other thing was that I noticed in the opposition memo, a lot of emphasis on no, no more water. And they kept saying, the plan shows no more water, you know, all of that shows no more water. And this is a point I make on a lot of cases. The law we're dealing with is about no higher peak discharge. I don't think, and I think I've asked and been confirmed, that you can discharge more water, but you can't discharge at a higher peak rate. And I think those get blurred in the report, or in the, in the opposition. And if we think further about this, we want to keep that point clear. I wonder if, and I'm not sure I have an answer, it seems to me that all, a great deal of the water from the project comes down through this, this way. Some goes down the street to storm drains. But a lot comes off the subdivision, down through this basin, and out across to the river. And I rather think it is entirely possible, because of the effects of what's being built, that there will be more water coming off, and less soaking in within the subdivision's land. So I'm not sure that we don't have an increase in the total amount of water that's being discharged across the land trust. And we're not going to solve that one tonight, I'm pretty sure. But I, I think that the only... But I, I, I think that the only, if we have this, one of these hearings, it's gonna, gonna make Superior Court like, look like child's play. People on all sides trying to make points and, and maybe we'll get to that, but maybe we shouldn't get to that this week or next. And I, I think, I think we, we were talking, well, we'll get to the lot releases. But I think we were talking about a lot releases that left at least one lot not released. There was an argument that affected the town. And if that's where we're talking, I think that's what we're gonna need to do tonight.
Let me just make, make one, one further comment on 81W in general. That any modification to an approved subdivision plan is an 81W modification. Typically, that happens at the request of the developer. And so if, after all is said and done, however we get there, if there ends up being a modification to the stormwater design or some other aspect of this plan, that will be an 81W modification. That's how we process subdivision plan modifications. Sort of like modifications of special permits for which we have a procedure. But 81W is the law governing modifications of approved definitive plans. So eventually, if a modify, if basically the developer agrees that a modification is appropriate, however we come to that conclusion, it will come before this board as an 81W proceeding, which basically normally in, 81W says you follow the same rules as you do for the initial approval as far as apt, which gives us a little bit of leeway to be, you know, to, to adapt to the nature of that particular proceeding. But nevertheless, it would normally involve the same public hearing that we would have on the original definitive plan. So if we ever get to that point of there being a modification proposed for this, however it comes about, it will be an 81W proceeding if you want to. I, I never, I never really knew that before, because we know, we've never really done this.
Right.
A modification of a subdivision.
Right.
Although we did, we did an informal one, we didn't, we didn't really realize it was an 81W.
Right.
Anyway, so just to make along, to keep a short, short start from getting along, which I have a tendency to do, let's just, you know, point out that we may eventually reach something that we would call an 81W proceeding. But that would normally be, involve the agreement of the developer here that the modification is appropriate and acceptable to the developer, which is the other part of it. A hostile or adversarial modification is somewhat more problematic.
The one initiated by the planning board on its own initiative.
Yes.
Yes, which is essentially what we have here.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, not to go too far off the beaten path here, but I put out a query on the Mass Planners List Serve, asking if any other, if anybody knew of any planning boards had had encountered and a, an 81W petition from and a butter, and no one had. No one, no one answered me to say they had. That's not, not to say it never happens, but it's sufficiently uncommon. But 81W by itself, the normal path, is not all that uncommon.
Understood. Thank you.
So from the board, is there anything more we want to talk about regarding the 81W, the 81W petition? Or opening to the public on topic of 81W? My comprehension is that we would like to defer further until we hear from council and get further stuff figured out.
So what would you like me to ask council to do, other than what she's done already?
I think at this point, given the answer we have from council, is that if there is further information that comes to light regarding this for council that would change her opinion in some way, then she should direct staff slash me or the vice chair on adding it back to our agenda and taking it up again with her new, with her revised comments. That's how I would, I don't know.
So if she reads what has been, was submitted today and changes her mind, then she would direct us to put it back on the agenda. Otherwise, it's, it's off the agenda and it won't come back. Is that what I'm understanding?
Maybe, maybe she should also be able to look at the argument, the arguments that are put forward about applicability and, you know, there's, I'm not actually asking that, I'm asking this and, oh, okay, maybe that makes a difference, you know, so.
Do you want her just, do you want me to ask her just to look at all the materials that have been submitted up until today? And write an additional memo that says either my initial opinion stands or I've changed my mind? And then that's the one discussion that we will have at the next meeting, and if she says I haven't changed my mind.
I think based on the discussion of the board tonight, someone can tell me if I'm wrong, and based on the response from the attorney, you know, our attorney is so far, that the board has no further action to take on 81W unless her opinion changes from the further information that she's received today and we've received today, and further, you know, furthering into that.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect.
Yes.
She just filed her opinion today.
Yes.
So you're saying that the information I've given you today, that I do not have a chance to brief her on that?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
I'm saying that we can forward further information to the, you know, to our Town Council. And, you know, should her opinion of the board's ability and action change, then we can bring it back, you know.
Is that to be filed through the planner to get to the Town Council or directly to Attorney Kramer?
I have no concern that it has to go through a middleman of Town staff.
Okay.
I, I would only say, I don't think it has to go, I don't know what the rules are here in Grafton. I wouldn't, I would say that if you are sending anything to her, send it to us as well, so that we have a record.
Alright, fair enough. Thank you.
Again, I'm not an attorney, so. I just get to keep saying that.
I would, I would, right, I would, I would like to see the conversation continue, because there are differences, differences of opinion.
Okay, so.
That was the point of what I was saying. Because the wording was, what's, what's on the record right now is the end of it. And obviously, there is discussion desired, and I'd like not to make a, make an unfortunate motion that didn't do what it should be done.
Can I suggest that perhaps we ask Town Council to have a memo or some kind of a decision for the board at their next meeting on January 9th? So that would give people enough time to go back and forth, but we can't get stuff on the morning of January 9th and decide. So it has to be in enough time to be able to, for her to make a decision. On January 9th, she will make a decision as to whether this is something that the board should continue or whether it's off the table. Does that make sense? What?
Yes.
By unanimous consent.
Okay.
So hearing nothing further for tonight regarding 81W, we still have the issue of the lot release request, and we do have a tri-party agreement that I believe has, I know has been reviewed.
It has, it has been reviewed and approved by our Town Council.
You say you don't believe it was?
I said it was.
It was, thank you.
Yes, yes, that's right. And I have a copy if you don't.
So what kind of motion do we need if we want to grant that?
I, I think we move, I would move that we grant the requested, excuse me, the release of lots 3, 4, 5, and 6 as requested.
Second.
And I have a motion and a second. And just for notary's sake on this point, would I be the signatory? Would that be since you as, you're not registered deeds? I don't.
Yeah, so I, what I believe is that as part of this motion, you will, the board should decide who should sign it. I am also not a notary, so I, I think you have to sign it in front of Natalia or another notary.
Okay.
So I'll amend the motion to authorize the chair of the board to sign.
I agree.
You're talking about the tripartite agreement?
The, the lot release for.
Oh, oh, sorry. I beg your pardon.
That's okay. So I have a motion, a second, as amended with authorizing me to sign. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Hesseger?
Aye.
Ms. Hesseger?
Aye.
Mr. Van Keterman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Now, let's see. I believe that is all for tonight regarding the Stillwater.
The tripartite agreement.
Oh, thank you, sorry. Yep.
Move that the board approve the tripart, tripartite agreement and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board, assuming that's appropriate.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the tripartite agreement and authorize me to sign. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Ms. Hesseger?
Aye.
Ms. Hesseger?
Aye.
Mr. Van Keterman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously. All right.
Part of this is to be continued. Hopefully to be, at least on our end of things resolved for a while.
Yes.
After Christmas.
After, definitely after Christmas. Yeah, we're not going to talk about this anymore as a board this year.
May I make a request? It has nothing to do with this project. It has something to do with another item that's on your agenda, so I don't want anybody to think I'm revisiting that. On behalf of McGill and the Highfields Project, I'll stick around if, if you want me to make this request when it comes up. But basically, that was there as a placeholder, so I'm asking that the board further continue it into January or even February. Remember, that was for the town meeting, so if you're willing to just accept that now, fine. If you want me to stick around until the item comes up on the agenda, that's fine too.
I believe we have received a written request for a continuance of the hearing.
Yes, we did.
To what day?
To January 23rd is the written request.
Great. Somebody's ahead of me.
So we'll, we will act on that after we read the opening of the public notice, because it's still a public.
Sure, understood. But you'll open it for the limited purpose of. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
I move that we grant the applicant's written request to continue.
You're a little ahead of yourself, Bob. We need to actually open the hearing.
Oh, is it a hearing? No.
We have to open the public hearing formally. Seeing as it has passed 7:30, why don't we dispatch to that? Mr. Robbins, you want to pull up the legal notice for this one?
Okay, let's see. Where did that go?
I think I have a copy of it if you want.
Yeah, I know.
Snow Road?
We're opening for Highfields right now, just to, just to continue it, and then we're going to go back to Snow Road.
Oh, this was, I said, we don't need to read the legal notice, because this has already been continued.
Oh, that's right.
It was continued from summer temperature.
I was not ahead of myself.
No, you were not. I, I misremembered.
Thank you very much.
If Bob's motion hasn't already been seconded, I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to accept the applicant's written request to continue to January 23rd. Any further discussion? Hearing, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to tell the board, they are scheduled for the January 3rd meeting at Concom.
Okay.
And so hopefully Concom will be done and allow the board to.
Yep.
They're, they're, they're figuring out what their dates are, I think. They, they know, they, they suggested the 23rd.
Yep. So hearing no further discussion. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Hesseger?
Aye.
Ms. Hesseger?
Aye.
Mr. Van Keterman?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously. We'll take this up again on January 23rd at 7:30 PM. And now the new public hearing for site plan approval of 25 Snow Road.
All right, this one, we will open with the reading of the legal notice pursuant to section 1.3.3 of the Town of Grafton zoning bylaw. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 12th, 2022, commencing at 7:30 PM to consider an application for site plan approval for family daycare on property located at 25 Snow Road and shown as Grafton Accessors Map 37 Lot 107. Said property is located in a medium-density residential R20 zoning district. The applicant slash owner is Jagath Senesinga, and I hope I'm not mangling the name too badly. A copy of the application materials is available for public inspection at the planning department during regular business hours or on the Town of Grafton website at www.grafton-ma.gov on the planning department slash development projects webpage.
Eve, are you willing to kick us off with briefly what you told me over the phone, make this a little streamlined like that?
Yes, so this is an application for site plan approval only. I think in the, some of the documents at some point, there was also an application for special permit. But it is what's called a Dover Protected Use and does not require a special permit. It only requires site plan review. The, the only issue that I saw was that then, they, they then basically asked the board to waive all of the site plan requirements. And so I'm not sure how you do a site plan review without any site plan at all. Really, the, I think the only issue that the planning board can discuss or on this issue is parking. There is a bit in the narrative, I believe, that says that there are six people, six kids allowed at the daycare at any one time, and they don't all come at the same time. And they maintain that the, the applicant maintains that the driveway is big enough to hold six cars if need be. But I, I don't know that for sure, because I don't have a plan of the driveway. And the, the other issue with the application is there's a, a floor plan in the, in the application, which is of, I believe it's taken from building permit applications plans to renovate the basement of the building. And, but it doesn't mention anywhere that it's for a daycare. And so it might be better to have the actual labels on the rooms explain to us where the uses are. Because this was actually, my understanding is that the planning, that the building department received plans for renovation of the basement and thought nothing of it until there was some indication that this was a daycare and had been operating as daycare for some time, I'm not sure how long, without the necessary permits. So it was actually issued a cease and desist order from the building commissioner until they came forward with the appropriate permits, which is what they're doing now. But the, the, the site, there's no site plan and the building plans are a little, are not as clear as they might be. And that's all I have on it, and I don't, I don't, that's all I have.
I do see we have the applicant on the, on Zoom, and would you like to add anything to what our planner has said, Jagath? I know I'm pronouncing the name probably wrong.
No, no, you're right. Yeah, I agree, but I haven't provided the other site plan. I don't know actually what I have to do. So I discussed with Natalia, and yeah, that's all I provided, but in case if you need a site plan or basement where we have the or naming the area, so we are the daycare operations. I can do that, but I think hope that will good enough.
Do you have something, Bob?
Well, when he's done, I've got a couple of things. First, I spent quite a while, since I didn't have a site plan, trying to make that little drawing match up with something, and it was kind of challenging. The other thing is that, and I'm not sure, I, I know what's going on there. And the, I, I'm not sure whether I realized that this was a basement, as a matter of fact, with the information we got. The other thing was that, I think Eve mentioned a narrative, which I look for, which we always have, and a narrative, which I look for, which we always have, and I didn't find it. Um, not that it isn't there, but I didn't find it.
I'm not sure if it was in the exact same spot. I know it came in uh after a request from Natalia. Um, and I read it on our computers, but I didn't see whether it was listed in the application. I apologize.
Yeah, well, I don't see it where I can see it. But I'm also concerned about the uh fire prevention uh office. Um, concern about one entrance. Um, I don't know whether uh a building permit or, or, I don't know how that gets enforced, um, but I'm concerned about his comment.
Can I, do I, can I respond to that?
You may.
So I uh, I did have clarification from him, and he was talking about um egress for people. I thought originally he was talking about egress in, for the, from the driveway. Um, uh but I do believe that um Bob Berger is at least here, perhaps as a.
Bob was on as an attendee, but is not anymore.
Okay, so I did have a conversation with the building co- um inspector in this regard, and he did not see it as a problem with the building code. Um, and he actually did, I asked him to double check to make sure uh that there were not any special rules that might need to be enforced, because it was a daycare and not just a regular um renovation of the basement, which is what it was originally presented to him as, and he did check today, and there was no additional um regulation. So as far as, as far as I think the commission, the building commissioner is concerned, it meets the building code, or he will make sure it meets the building code, and that the fire chief does not need to worry about that.
Yeah, it may be that it's a state regulation of daycare.
Right, and, and Bob Berger called the state today to ask, to have that information.
Yes.
But uh, did he call the people that regulate daycare? Or did he call the people that he calls about building code?
Uh, no, he knew, he knew, he knew it was a daycare, and that was the, the question we discussed was are there additional regulations that would be required for daycare that are not otherwise related to, necessary for building code?
I.
And that's the question he asked.
I, I think it's fair to presume that Mr. Berger received and gathered enough information for him to feel confident as our zoning enforcement officer on that, you know, result, and that he'll make sure that fire chief is comfortable with their shared understanding as well.
Hmm, my, my point is that it's, it's the people that I think the health uh departments uh comment uh license through the state. Um, the people who do the licensing may push back. It's not our issue.
Right, it's not your issue, regardless, it's not your issue anyway, because you're really just doing site plan, and not sort of the interior.
Right, if that, if that doesn't meet the requirements to obtain a daycare license from the state, that's the applicant's problem, it's not this.
Right, and, and there's still an occupancy, occupancy permit that Mr. Berger will have to issue, and he will take that into account. But the planning board should not have to be worried about that.
Well, I wanna, I, I don't know why I can't see the narrative, and I I, without a site plan, I can't decide about parking or any of that.
Yes, so it's, it sounds like with some additional documentation that the board can see, you know, the project narrative, which, yeah, it's not there on the website where we can see it, and a site plan, I mean, showing that what, what they showed us as the area to be used as daycare is the basement, which was not at all clear to us. Uh, site plan showing.
Yeah, it wasn't clear.
Show, showing the uh, ba- basically showing the uh, you know, the, the location of the, of the whole, the whole structure and the parking. I mean, it, it might be nothing, not much more than a plot plan, I'm not quite sure. I don't wanna make it overly complicated, but enough for the board to evaluate whether the parking is sufficient and any other, any other aspects of the site plan meet uh, or meet the requirements.
Yeah, so.
Is the applicant here tonight?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
The applicant did briefly speak already on the call, but.
What did he intend to?
Hmm?
It, it sounds like the board non-formally is looking to say, we're not comfortable waiving the site plan requirement that was requested in the waiver form, in particular, prepared by a professional architect or registered professional engineer, you know, as written, so just a, if the applicant believes their current site layout is suitable for the parking, we just need something from a, you know, certified architect or engineer, well, not architect, but an engineer that shows the current conditions of the s- of the site to satisfy the board's site plan.
Yes. Yes, I think we can note that there are no, no exterior changes being proposed.
Right.
Uh, that, 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 you know, that, that would, that, I would expect to see that as part of the narrative that, that we can't seem to read.
I, I have it on my, I have a brief narrative I have on my computer, if you want me to pull it up. If you want me to share this.
I'm.
It's, uh, I'll say at least from my side, but the board can ask you to read if they wish, but I think as long as we have it added to the record, it seems like we are looking to continue at the very least to receive a site plan.
Okay.
And if it's in the record before our next meeting, I think that satisfies the board's curiosity on the formal narrative.
Okay.
If we're not gonna be making a decision on this tonight.
Then you don't need to say.
You know.
Okay.
We, we, we can be, we, we can be satisfied with looking forward to being able to read that document that we currently can't read.
Okay.
For whatever reason, I mean. I know we've, you know, we're just getting used to a brand-new, you know, town website.
Yes.
And Natalia has had some difficulties getting things to work there.
Yes.
Teeth, teething pains.
So you would like, you would like, what I'm hearing from the board, and correct me if I'm wrong, that potentially you would continue to another meeting, at which point you would like to see a site plan showing no additions to the exterior and how the parking will work?
That's, that seems to be the only criteria the board is currently looking to evaluate for the site plan.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be like a full all-in site plan, but it's show the parking.
Yeah, right. I don't, I don't think we need the topography and.
Show the parking relation to the road and the house, you know, I would, I would say.
Yes.
One quick comment, so I got the uh occupancy and certification through uh Burger.
Thank you.
Yeah. So as I understood, so it's providing only a, a picture of the, the driveway is good enough, or do I have to get a, a complete architecture or somebody engineer do uh, or work and showing the, the driveway?
I believe the board is looking to, you know, I'll say, I'll, I am, and I was, I suspect other members of the board are looking to see a professional engineer's plan of where the driveway is relating to the road in your house. So.
Mm-hmm.
You know. A little bit more than.
Not necessarily all the rest, uh, you, you know, there's other stuff that they um will include in a full site plan.
Yeah, we don't.
And you might, if it, if it.
We, we, we don't need.
If it'll save time and money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't need um some of, some of that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think not, probably not much more than the, the, the footprint of the house and the driveway relative to the street and the property boundaries.
Yep.
I mean, most everything is.
Yeah, and we don't need exact for like the back, you know, back portions of the lot that stretches a lot further than.
It looks that way. I was surprised that there was that big chunk of land back there.
Yep.
But.
Um. Well.
Okay.
Can we move forward?
I think the next step is for the applicant to formally request a continuation to one of our upcoming meetings that, and presumably would give them enough time to get the appropriate plan. And they can always continue further if need be. That would be a verbal request tonight, as well as a written request followed up either in email or in person, you know, within the next day or so.
Yeah, can I ask?
Go ahead.
Uh, Natalia, I'm, are, she has, she was out sick today. I'm not sure if she's on there as to what, how the process works. We do usually have a form that they fill out?
Yes, we, we do have a form. We've also, with the nature of remote meetings, we've also allowed in a formal email to s- to the staff saying
Okay.
that they're looking to request, to request a continuance on this matter till the state, because it has to be date certain. And if staff doesn't have the right information, they'll, they can circle back and get.
Yeah, but it's a simple email requesting continuation to January ninth. I'm assuming that January ninth would be the I mean, I wanna, I'm, I'm more than happy to give them as much time as they need, but for, for what we're asking.
Why don't we say the ninth, and then they can ask for more time if they don't have their plan?
Yep. I would just like the formal Jagath to say out loud that he would like to continue till the ninth, as a button suspenders.
Yeah, I ag- I agree. I will continue uh on this and uh provide the whatever required uh, the uh information.
Yeah, and we'll need you to sign a form that says that, okay?
Okay.
The planning office can help them.
Yeah, and then talk to the planning office.
Okay. Alright, so I have the applicant's request. Do I have a motion?
Yes. On the.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue the hearing at the applicant's request until January ninth at seven thirty P M. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Van Katramen.
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously. We'll pick this back up again on January ninth. Thank you, Jagath.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll see you next year.
Yes.
We, we can say that in a lot of cases now, I think.
Okay.
Uh, let's do this next year.
Yes.
So we are ahead of where I thought we would be at this time of the night. So discussion items, master plan, was there, I see items here. I don't know if anything is new up here. I haven't read it all, but.
Yeah, so I, you know, I, I reviewed the uh master plan information that was uh posted to the website. Basically, CM RPC has given us an update following on the discussion we had that uh with them a number of weeks ago. Uh, comments that we provided back to them. Uh, they've uploaded to the, uh, uploaded to our website. We have some updated maps. Um, um, some update, updated data, these are two updates to the, you know, same, same set of maps and slides that they presented to us back in, whenever it was. They added uh, uh this, the food access in this index data, which was a, an element that I had never seen before, and I was, I was interested in in where that data came from, so that's, they posted that. And there's a spreadsheet that basically li- lists all the updates that we've been discussing with them and what the current status of those updates is. So that's sort of you know, up, bringing us up to date from our previous discussion and review. I think the updates were largely in response to comments from me and from Chris. Uh, in terms of where we go from here, which is, at some point, we have to continue this work on the, on the master plan. So the email from CM RPC, which is also posted in there, mentions the, you know, the information having been updated and uh seems to suggest that we should be, review that updated information and uh suggest any additional updates for what they're calling the phase one info. That's basically the inter- the information gathering phase of the master plan process.
Yep.
So we're somewhere close to being done with that. There, you know, they're, they're interested in our feedback as to whether there's anything more that they should do for the phase one data gathering. And then the next step is to start thinking about what we do in phase two. And they've got a list of, you know, uh suggested topics or questions to be addressed as part of the stakeholder engagement process. So that's sort of you know, to, that's the idea there is to get us thinking about what are the questions we want people to answer for us? What are the issues we want people to discuss when we reach out to the community? So that's basically what I saw in what uh CM RPC provided to us for whatever it's worth.
Alright.
And I think from where we go from here right now, for those of us who are able to take the time to read through this, read through it, think about what we wanna do, think, think about it, other, other ideas that belong in here that they haven't put in yet. And I'm gonna say, I think that we're going to want to uh uh, sort of, you know, get more engaged and really, really figure out where, how we're gonna organize this and run it from here on out. CM RPC is obviously, you know, contracted to take the lead on it, or to, 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 to work with, work with us, but you know, we have to think about how we're gonna organize our end of things and, and where we're beginning the uh beginning the process of reaching out to stakeholders and to the community, that's gonna be a big part of what we do. And uh, I think maybe our new planner has some experience in that area, so we'll, we're counting on you Fiona to help us out with this. And probably, I think, I think once you start, once you get, come on board Fiona, uh, we will probably wanna get to work, working with you and uh, uh, to sort of nail down and lay out the uh, the next steps in our process.
Because. Absolutely.
Yeah, that, that, that will be part of the responsibilities of that office. Is to, yeah, work with it, work with us on it from day to day. I mean, you know, in prin- in principle, the planning board takes lead on this, but uh you know, we're counting on a lot of other people working with us to get it done.
Yep. Alright. Anyone else have any comments, thoughts, anything?
I have a couple of thoughts on this question, if I may. So, uh, first one is a question. Uh, the question in terms of which group or who in uh is part of this uh master plan exercise can s- can set the direction for the town? Uh, for example, when I look at the master plan, uh, not necessarily from a town point of view, but from an organization for a business, we would say in the next five years, this is where we want to be. These are the newer products we want to launch, or these are different territories we want to get into, regions we want to get into. So if I try to translate that, is that part of what we would do in the master plan exercise? And it's an open question, and Rob, uh, uh, Bob has prior experience. Dave has been very involved uh, uh, in this piece. So I'm trying to get some understanding of how do we set the direction? Should we, the planning board uh, say that in the next five, ten, fifteen years, we would have this, we want to see a plan to get to fifteen percent, twenty percent of affordable housing. We want to have uh twenty percent of um, uh, open areas for recreation and whatnot, right? Do, or maybe even looking at how do we um stimulate economic activity through this master plan to bring down our uh property tax rates from where we are by ten percent in five years, or fifteen years and whatnot? So who, who can help us? Uh, at least, who can at least help me answer this question? And then I had a question about the maps, but first this topic.
Yeah, well, so overall, I think that, you know, what, what you've described is a lot of the end result of the master plan. What the, what the, the master plan is in, intended to, you know, to, to develop these goals and objectives and targets. And part of that has to be uh an action plan that says this is how we're gonna get there. I mean, you know, you, you, first, first you have to know what you're going, and that's what you've been, you know, that's what you're talking about, Prabhu, is you know, setting some goals, and, and, and this is something, you know, that, that we, that, that we are expected to work with the community on. And we, you know, we, the planning board are sort of, you know, the, the, the ones who are responsible for the master plan, but, but we're gonna be reaching out to every, en- engaging the community as mu- as much as we possibly can, so that the goals the master plan sets are going to be goals that the community at large buys into. And we have to have, you know, and it's sort of a bugaboo of mine, because I've seen things, you know, looking back in the twenty-year-old master plan, we had a ton of recommendations. A hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty of them, something like that. I used to have the exact number at the tip of my tongue, but I don't. But anyway, we had all these objectives, and we did the same thing with the open space and rec plan a couple of years ago. We've got a lot of, a lot of recommendations, but we tend not to spell out how we are gonna get there, you know. What are we gonna do to uh achieve those goals? What are we gonna do to achieve those goals? And so that's part of what I want to get to have us to end up within the master plan is is an action plan that says we're gonna do this, this board or this committee or this department is gonna do this. And these guys are gonna do that. And it's it's gonna be a combination of things, but it's a combination of setting the goals and figuring out how we are gonna meet those goals. And yes, we we are, as I said, we're 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 sort of responsible for seeing to it that all that gets done. Uh, C M R P C is gonna do a lot of the work for us. The community is gonna be engaged. Other town boards and committees and departments are gonna be very much engaged in this. So we're all gonna be working together on it, but you know, in a sense, the buck stops with us.
Yeah, I I think the how do you what's to be done to accomplish the goals comes somewhere towards the third phase of our project and and what Prabhu was, I think, asking is really the second stage. A lot of interaction with everyone, including us uh, as to what everybody wants. And I I, you know, that that that's where um what you're saying, Prabhu.
Right.
Will be brought in. Um, and and then we with we with C M R P C will try to figure out how to make that into a package that might actually uh accomplish. So it's very, it's very hard to make plans for how the Board of Selectmen are going to accomplish X or whether the Conservation Commission is gonna do Y um or, you know, whatever. But that's why there are so many items in that list that maybe haven't been done, Dave. Uh Fiona, the uh, I I was the one in charge of the committee that did the uh the one twenty years ago. At that point, the new planner came in about two thirds of the way through or three quarters of the way through. And everything kind of collapsed. It it took a long, oh, I know, the the consultant serious problems too. So it kind of, you know, the energy tied out and it didn't quite, the the back end of it, I I've never been all that satisfied with, but fewer fewer items with more getting it done included in them would be um I'm pretty sure something we wanted.
Yeah, I I just looked up the the data I gathered uh in the two thousand and one comprehensive master plan. The recommendations chapter had a total of two hundred and twenty-two recommendations. Some of them were duplicates. So what we had, uh, unique recommendations, we ended up with one hundred and ninety-five altogether. And of those, approximately half were either completed or partly completed or are ongoing. So we ended up basically meeting or partly meeting about half of the recommendations. A few of them we abandoned for perfect good reasons. And nearly half of them, we just never did take any action. But a hundred and ninety-five recommendations is just, it's too much. I I I, you know, just reiterate what Bob said. It's, you know, I I'd like to have something, I'd like to end up with something that is uh, a relatively modest set of hopefully achievable action items. Goals first and then action items to get to those goals. And we got our work cut out for us here.
Can can I go back to Dave, what you were you were saying earlier, right? I I guess even before we get to the community, do we as a planning board, uh, at least think about the categories, right? If I look at two hundred and twenty line items, I can't even read through two pages of those, right? But if we look at an introduction to that and say, these are the five categories that we are trying to focus on. Hopefully that will help uh conversations of the community. And is that something we should get started working with C M R P C, C M R P C in phase one or how do we?
We're in, we're we're finishing phase one, aren't we? And going into phase two. Um, I think that it it'll be somewhat in parallel. I I say, we'll have to see exactly how how C M R P C is gonna organize all the meetings and whatnot. But um, I see us wanting to be involved in listening and providing input on a on an ongoing basis uh a- as we go along there. We're, but we we shouldn't be dictating the categories now before we have the inputs that we need categories to accomplish.
Yeah, I mean, the the typical master plan structure has about six or seven or eight broad categories of things like land use, housing, economic development, public facilities, uh, open space and recreation and a couple of, so the those are very broad categories that are generally appear in every master plan. But as as we get into this a little bit further, we'll be able to identify specific topics within those categories that we want to focus on. And that's, yeah, that's that's sort of us working with C M R P C and with other boards and committees a- as well.
Prabhu, have have you had a chance to look at the previous?
I did, I did.
About the structure and all.
Right, right.
Because that that structure was sort of, this is the way you do it, ten chapters or nine chapters or whatever it is on these subjects. And I guess you can put in more things if you want.
Yeah, we have some flexibility in there. Those those topics tend tend to follow from the state law that uh that uh authorizes and mentions the comprehensive master plans.
I think it requires them. It just doesn't fund them.
Yes, minor detail.
Unlike some other places, like where the planner we had for most of the plan had come from, where she had a, she was in a state that funded master plans. Okay, well.
I had one last question outside of this. Eh, the the maps, is there there are quite a bit of, quite a number of maps out there, uh, right? I'm looking at about thirty-five different maps. Is there any context to each of these maps or should we go back to the meeting? The recording of the meeting and then try to correlate. What does each map, what is the expectation from each of these maps?
Expectation?
I mean, what what do we read? Should I read each and every map to understand what are the context? Why was this map defined?
But we're at the stage of collecting data, what what the current situation is. Then we can use that to inform our discussions.
Yeah, the the maps.
Oh, oh, look, the housing is thus and so. Wouldn't it be better or shouldn't we try to, you know, do that to the housing? Uh, but but this this stage is collecting existing data. Am I right, Fiona?
Yeah, the collection of maps, you see, there is sort of a, it's it's just a a large number of maps. It's not organized in any particular fashion. The maps generally relate to the various different topics, the topic areas. A, you know, and these maps are sort of, you know, they've, C M R P C has produced all these maps. We will choose ultimately which of these maps are included in the final document. We may we may decide that not all the maps are relevant, or maybe they are, or maybe we want some more. But yeah, the sort of the 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 title block on each map, so it gives you some sense of the content of the map. And you can probably informally match them up to the various topic areas of the uh it's it's all kind of loosely organized at this point since it's more data gathering and not so much organizing the data.
And when you say title block, Dave, uh, you're are you referring to the legend? Is that what you're saying? I was looking for a header which would say, this is the physical map of the town. There's a topography map of the town. This is the population map. I can't find that, so, but I can read the legend and then, oh, this is what this map particularly says, talks about and stuff.
Yeah, the uh, I have to bring this map up on my screen here. Yes, right, so. The the title of the map is written along the right hand edge.
Right, right. I got it now. Thank you. I tend to see the ignore anything which is not readable and that was oriented differently, my bad.
I mean, that's not necessarily the best location for the map title. But given the proportions of grafton on a map, if you're presenting the map in a portrait orientation like this, that's the best you can do.
That's a landscape.
Landscape orientation. But it must be time for me to go home. My brain's not functioning fully right now.
Well, I'd like to act on that.
Is there anything more regards to master plan tonight?
Can I ask what? Is there an action that the board would like to continue or should we just tell C M R P C to? Would you, do you wanna, do you wanna direct C M R P C to focus on particular areas or do you want them to come back or?
I want them, I want them to do the next thing in the this has been laid out what's supposed to happen.
But I think they were look potentially when Chris, when before Chris left, he indicated that he wanted the board to digest the information in the first phase and to perhaps give some guidance to C M R P C as to what you wanted to focus on and what kind of information you wanted to get when they were dealing with the stakeholders.
Yeah, my my take on where we are right now is that eh, it's, we 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 can be reviewing the information that C M R P C just provided to us, you know. You know, the updates and the new information. Providing feedback to C, further feedback to C M R P C on the 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 data gathering, the maps, the uh, the the maps and the other data, the data part of the presentation. Is there something more we want them to include? And that's basically what they asked, what Dominique asked for was our, you know, you know, any any further edits that we want for the phase one data. And then she's asking for for us to think about the kinds of questions we want to ask, the topic we want addressed in the engage, the public engagement process. So that's that's kind of homework for us at this point.
Okay, so this wasn't, so I guess I'm asking this, was this, I don't remember exactly when last week we got this, because I did speak to Dominique last week and asked her for this information. So what I'm hearing is that the board has not had enough time to digest it. It would like to discuss it in more detail at the next meeting and say, yes, these are what we want you to focus on or so that they can start getting onto phase two, but I want to make sure that they're focusing on what you, the board wants.
I think, at least for me, I I missed the whole Dropbox link, so I didn't see some of the material, you know, that I know that for sure. But beyond that, like, so I I need some time to digest in details, but as a overall from your email, they're looking to do for phase two, this for me is reasonable. I don't see a reason to, at least, again, for me, I don't see a reason to stop them from starting down the path of phase two if we have further comments or any areas you want to focus on or things we think that maybe they don't need to focus on as much. That can be shared and minor adjustments to their, you know, plans without losing much effort is what my impression is.
So so whatever Dominique sent is fine with you to continue along those lines. So that we don't, I can call her and say, go ahead and start with that. Or do you want one more meeting to talk about it? I I'm I'm just trying to figure out whether we respond to her now or say, let's wait till after the ninth and move forward then.
Are you saying a meeting with her or just us? Because there's, she's had, she has a certain number of meetings.
No, 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 just, I'm not, I'm not suggesting she come back. That's, so I think what Chris wanted to do was he didn't necessarily want them to come. They came the week before I started. And when I talked to Chris, I think he wanted the board to digest what they did and to start to, you know, say, yes, that's all set and this is what you want to discuss. Um, what we want you to do forward and give them direction, not have them come back, but at least start the work. So at the last meeting, the board asked me to reach out to her again and I asked her to actually put in writing where they think the board should focus, which I think she she did. And now the board either needs to discuss it more tonight or maybe wants to discuss it more the next meeting before we start her moving forward or not.
If I can make a
Without her coming.
If I can make a suggestion of what to say and anyone on the board can color it or change it in their opinions, but is something along the lines of the board has not pursued all the documents in in full detail yet. But are overall satisfied with the direction you're looking to go. We will be discussing this more on the ninth, but see no compelling reason to delay you before that. I don't, something along the, along those lines. Anyone have a contrarian thought or anything else?
I think, while we may have some additional feedback.
Yes, you know, I just, you know, it was.
But I I think if if the process can continue moving forward, is there so we're basically getting into a stakeholder engagement phase. And uh, you know, we we need to be moving ahead on that while while we can still, we still have some flexibility to think about what we want to talk about with the stakeholders, you know, organizing the stakeholder engagement, you know, identifying who we're gonna meet with, you know, and when and how and, you know, just, how are we going to get that stakeholder engagement in motion? There's no reason we can't, you know, we can't get that, you know, put that in motion for lack of a better term.
I'm pretty sure that with the scope you just mentioned, that that's covered. You know, that that's also C M R P C uh is part of that. And it's, you know, there's an element in what they're gonna do, if I'm not mistaken. That helps pull that together.
Yeah, that was a big, that was a big part of C M A or P T C's proposal to us is right, that they wanted to focus a lot on community engagement.
Just by the, no. When when we're, I have one other thing about this. Um, little thing. No, I've been very interested in how well the new town website is coming along. Fiona, both Dave and I are on the I T committee in our spare time. And I, never mind about when. I don't, I I just followed the link I stumbled onto that said comprehensive master plan. It took me to a page under Planning Department, not Planning Board, which is probably good. Uh, Studies and Projects Current. Um, and there is Grafton Comprehensive Master Plan, but a lot of these, I I think, I'm pretty sure that this material we're just talking about, that's on our agenda, accessible through our agenda, is not there. I I I think we're gonna end up with a lot of documents. But I'd like to have them all in a in an accessible way for anybody out in the town to find, you know, like, I'm sure there are people who would love to look at those maps.
Natalia's hands is raised and I suspect she can speak to that.
And I understand the problems of the website.
When the material was transferred um to the new website, it's not in the correct order that it was originally in. So I have to go through it and reorganize it somehow and then add the new material. I just didn't feel comfortable adding the new material with the other material already in not chronological order.
Okay, so so you you're anticipating the the these files that we have on our agenda ending up on the page. It says comprehensive, Grafton Comprehensive Master Plan.
Yes, I normally add them ahead of time, but like this time I said.
It's okay, but I I'm interested in the organization of a site and the findability. I like to post things that say, hey, go to the website, it's all there when people ask questions.
Yeah, that's normally what I try to do, but it wasn't feasible.
No, it's it's been very difficult. Um, and in many, many ways. Okay.
Do you have what you do from the board for?
Yeah, so I will just tell uh Dominique from C M R P C to move forward, at least in organizing how we will do stakeholder meetings along the lines of what she suggested the topics were with the idea that the board may tweak the topics or tweak the specifics.
Sounds good. Sounds good, so moved.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
By unanimous consent.
All right. We do have an item on the agenda for MBTA zoning. I'm not aware of anything new on that subject.
Nope.
No, I don't think so.
There's, there's nothing new there. You know, we have it, we have an action to complete an action plan by the end of January. I'm perfectly willing to wait at least until our new planner starts and gets up to speed. Um, I've, I've done some work on that, and I've got some rough ideas of what we need to do there. But yeah, we have, we have time, at, at this point, we have time to work on it. We don't need to pay much attention to it immediately.
Hey, can't, well, there isn't a whole lot of time there, but can't we just, our plan is, hey, we've already got started and we'll get it done by the end of January. Or, 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 or we'll get it done, no, we'll, we'll, we'll get it done, um, by the deadline.
Yep, no, there's a little bit of information they asked for, they, you know, it's, it's not terribly complicated, but, uh, you know.
Yep.
Filling out a form and there's a few, a few, a few, a little bit of notes I've taken about what has to go into the form.
Yep.
But for the moment, that's well in hand.
Sounds good. Next on our agenda is bills. Do I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Have a motion to a second?
Getting to them.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve our bills. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Van Keterman.
Aye.
And I vote aye, I declare our bills will be paid.
Oh, this is December, what am I?
Next on our agenda is minutes, there are none. I know there was some anticipated, but we didn't get quite that far this week. Next item is staff report. Do we have anything new to mention to the board?
Uh, I think that Fiona coming on board is about as good news as we, we have. I, I, nothing else. I think that Evan and I have talked a little bit about me overlapping with Fiona for a couple of weeks. I will probably be at your next meeting on January 9th at the very least.
Okay.
Um, but, yeah, that's all I have.
All right, I will say just one minor comment from me in sort of a staff report is, in relation to 58 Fallout Street, there was a request from David Maxon just to ask if the board was to be requesting of the applicant the additional details that he put forward for that public hearing. I am, I promised Natalia I'd write a letter to forward along. I didn't get that done yet, but I'll have it for tomorrow that will be added to the course, to the correspondence in the, in the public hearing for that. Just wanted to call it out that it's still.
I hadn't seen until, I think I picked it up in something that came by today, that, uh, about the, uh, oh yeah, I, I think, uh, Natalia sent out a, a message about the, uh.
About the balloon test.
Balloon test.
Yes.
This weekend.
The, this weekend is, is the date, is the, Saturday is the formal date, and Sunday is the rain date.
Yeah.
But, and then.
And then there's a letter that finally came in that, that, uh, responds to, uh, that discussion about good places to look from.
Yep. All right, and then we had several items in our correspondence. I don't know if anybody wants to discuss any of them.
Some interesting things, but I don't think any that we, I, I didn't see anything that needed us.
I agree.
No.
All right, and that brings us to, anyone want to extend the meeting past 10?
No, but, um, I don't see.
Reports.
Um, reports from boards and.
Reports from planning board representatives on town committee and CMRPC.
Thank you, that is on our formal agenda, it's not on our meeting materials page this time, so I totally slipped, skipped it. But any reports from planning board representatives on town committees or CMRPC? It doesn't seem like anyone has anything to say.
Nothing from me.
Oh, there was no, well, we've done sta- staff report, okay. Then in that case, um, I move adjourned.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, this is non-debatable. Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Ms. Hassinger. Mr. Van Keterman.
Aye.
And I vote aye, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, have a great night.
Thanks Fiona.
We, our next meeting is next year.